Call this meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Todd Ward.
Here.
Greg Nelson.
Here.
Tom Jordan.
Present.
Dick Samuels.
Here.
Paula Stewart.
Here.
Jason Hill.
You.
Terry Jennings.
Here.
John Green.
Here.
Jim Mann. Brooke Evans. Tiffany Peters.
Here.
Rob Cross.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda. I would like to add a closed session after action items under five ILCs, 120, 2C1 for employment issues.
That's personnel too?
Personnel, yeah.
Yes, great.
Yeah, personnel, yes.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Let's see, we got... What's that?
Isn't comments from the floor next?
I didn't hear what you said.
Isn't comments from the floor next?
Oh, yes, sir. We never have them so.
Clay?
Yes.
Comments from the floor.
Comments.
I was going right to the minutes.
Okay. Stand here.
Wherever you like.
Okay. My name is Lynn Sheef. I'm with the Jacksonville Promise. I'm one of the board members and one of the founding members. So, I'll tell you a little bit about the Jacksonville Promise in five minutes of life. In August of 2019, thirty students started college here in Jacksonville with the help of the Jacksonville Promise. Almost all of them received $2,500 for their education. In many cases, the Jacksonville Promise helped them decide to stay local to go to college. And in the case of one student, our scholarship was the deciding factor that kept her here in town. This is huge because it's not just about sending students to college. It's also about the economic health of our colleges and the economic health of our communities. This program started four years ago. In 2015, we incorporated the Jacksonville Promise and started raising money for this program. We thought it might take ten to twenty years to see an economic benefit from our scholarships. The idea was that by developing an economic benefit locally for the cost of college, Jacksonville would become more attractive than other communities, encouraging families to move here because of the scholarship. In our first year of awards, which was 2016, we gave sixteen scholarships of $2,000 each. In the second year, we gave nineteen scholarships of $2,000. Last year, our economic, our applicants will jump to thirty-six, which amazed us. And we realized that the Jacksonville Promise had actually become an economic entity in only three years. Jacksonville Promise is having an effect on the economy of Jacksonville in three ways. First, it's boosting the number of students at the local colleges. This means colleges collect more money. The colleges can spend more money, hire more teachers, staff, revamp the dorms, et cetera, et cetera. The money stays in the community and it's spent and re-spent probably four times because things don't add to nothing. Some of this money is returned to the city and to the county, okay, adding funds that are available to local projects. Second, the Jacksonville Promise encourages college graduates to stay in Jacksonville after their college graduation. National and local studies have both shown seventy-five percent of students who graduate from a college stay within a hundred mile radius of where they graduated. They get jobs, they raise their families, and they stay close. That again contributes to the economy of Jacksonville. Third, we believe that in the future, families will actually choose to move to Jacksonville because of the scholarship that their children can get just by being Jacksonville residents. But, we give them only to the people who raise their children here. We don't give them to students who come from Moline because they want to go to IC or something like that. The longer you spend as a student, the longer you spend in JSB 117, the more money you get. And there's a breakdown of that on that folder that some of you have got. So, the promise is generating money for the community already in the four years we've been here. We hope that the local governments will seek fit to support the promise financially, just as the promise supports the local economy. We have a matching grant from the Tracy Family Foundation for $30,000. We've raised $10,000 from individuals, $10,000 from businesses, and we're working on raising $10,000 from governmental units around the area. We have until December fifteenth to meet this goal. So, on behalf of the Jacksonville Promise Board, I encourage you to make a financial contribution to the Jacksonville Promise. I think I might have one minute if you have any questions.
Is that a one-time gift or $2,500? Not a gift, but a sponsorship, whatever you want.
It's a scholarship.
Scholarship.
It is only, at the moment, it's only for freshman year.
Okay, that's true.
So, they get $500, they get $1,000 for the first semester, $1,000 for the second semester. If we raise more money, our goal is to pay their, all their tuition for all four years. But, we're a long way from that, but we're starting, taking baby steps and moving along. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, within the minutes, we got three, sir. Regular session minutes from July ninth, seven PM. That one special? Oh, for the special meeting on July ninth. Regular minutes for August thirteenth, 2019, six PM, also special board meetings. And regular session minutes for October third, seven PM. Any additions or corrections? Motion to approve those?
Which one are we doing?
Uh, all three unless you want to break them down.
No, well, October third, just Danny Art Looney's name is misspelled, his last name.
Okay.
How you spell his last name?
With an A, it's Art uh Looney. Don't know that he would care, but I haven't.
We got three.
Yeah, it probably does look like it now.
Three minutes. Is motion, was that change? Is that?
Yes.
A second, please.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same side? Any correspondence? Treasury report for September 2019, motion to approve the Treasury report? Anybody?
Don't you normally like read a bunch of numbers?
No, that's the payables.
Oh, my bad. I was waiting for that.
That's okay. Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side?
I agree, Greg. I guess I was thinking the same thing with you. I'm like, well, you gotta read the numbers.
Yeah, that's the payables.
Yeah.
October 2019 payables, general fund checks, $360,443.80. Total TIF checks, $188,818.80. Total motor fuel tax checks, $3,826.35. Total tourism checks, $4,689.98. Total water and sewer deposit refund checks, $225. Manual checks issued in October 2019, $193,733.78. Total October payables, $554,177.58.
Um, and Harry, I wanted to make, John wanted to make sure we noted this, one of our TIF action items. Do you want to mention that payable? We had discussed it before.
Well, if you remember the Dune Amendment on the hiring work of the other nine hundred, it was an act, you have to approve payables, but that was contingent on passing the amendment.
That money's in the payables, so that portion of the payables will be, need to be contingent on passing.
Passing that.
The action, action item number four.
Four. So, just as long as the board's aware of that, do we need to put that in the?
Yes.
Motion?
And also as part of the motion, in that, in that same action item number four, that will close out the escrow account.
Yes.
The way we're, we're paying for that road fund over there. Uh, not the same action, I apologize.
Well, I was gonna say not on the.
No, not that, but on the previous action where we did Holiday Lane, sorry. That, that payable, the way we're paying that, where we agreed to do the thirty-four thousand? Thirty-some thousand?
Forty-three.
That will close out that escrow account. So, as part of that, that'll close that out and the rest will come from TIF.
Okay. Thank you, John.
You're welcome. On this payables, the $400 that's going back to Stacy, that's for her?
There. I know it's confusing with that, but it doesn't show up on your check register. Um, but we saw it on like the unpaid invoice report that you guys did. In a perfect world, you would get the check register ahead of time, but that's just how payables works with us. Like, it's a process and that's a draft that you get. So, that's not payout. That's your unpaid report. If you look at the check register, it doesn't show up.
Okay. But, we are paying that back, right?
No.
And?
She actually.
The liquor license wasn't?
She's applied for a new one.
Applying for a new one and gave us another $100 check.
Yeah, it was yesterday afternoon when I saw it, so, last night.
So, she's paying $500 for a liquor license?
So, she's applied for, yes.
Okay. I don't know, I would have refunded it and just had her recut a check for $500 just to make that paper trail, but.
Yeah, I mean, shouldn't we finish out one that was done instead of, I mean, that just seems a little messy.
In my mind, it worked out just because it was never like, she was never denied a liquor license. She was denied a special use, so, since she still had it hanging out there, and it was just a difference of $100. I mean, she has the canceled checks, we have the paper trail and that. So, I mean, it's up to you, you can do that, you know, but it, it wasn't necessary in my opinion, so.
Rob, is that necessary?
I'm not.
Okay, the way it's being done?
If I'm hearing this right, she applied for and got a liquor license? No, no, she applied for Class A, which I said I wouldn't issue. Okay, right, right. Pending the special use. And I told her that if she didn't get the special use permit, that the money would be refunded. If you want, you certainly have the ability to refund it if you want to. Well, I was going on vacation and she called and said, keep that money, I'm gonna apply for a different license, I'm just gonna apply that to that. If Tiffany thinks we have enough documentation to, to, to explain it, fine. Because that's who they would go and ask to explain it.
I'm just curious why we didn't know about that.
Know about what?
Know that there was this going on. I mean, my thought was she was gonna be refunded the money.
It just happened.
Nobody knew about it until last night, so.
Well, yeah, last, I guess last week, she said, don't refund it. But then this week, she just came in and applied.
I'm not sure we really want to set a precedent of someone applying for a liquor license telling us how to refund our money or not refund our money.
The way I see it was two in, two in line and one in the other. I mean, if we would have had a check back to her, we would have been sitting all over her, all her checks, so, I mean, I, I get what you're saying, like, she's telling us what to do.
Yeah, my, that was more of a rhetorical statement. I mean, I just, I don't know how, if we really want to set that precedent, that we're supposed to refund the money. That was the original thought. She was gonna get it back, then she can call and tell us, no. Just refund the money and then start over. So, I, I mean, that's my thought, but.
I don't think it matters because the money's the same regardless of how it comes. And if you've already given the $400 here because the form wasn't right, and then you say, oh, I want to apply for something else, if you haven't, haven't done anything yet, I want to apply for a different one, just hold that. Like, I don't, I don't know, that seems like a common courtesy to somebody.
Well, if Rob says you can document that paper trail, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Keep me from her going to say, well, they, they made it refund me my money, then he can say, well, here you go.
So, she's applied for another liquor license? Just, just to have one, or does she have a site in mind?
I, I assume it'd be the same location. I honestly haven't even looked at it yet. It's sitting in there in my box, so.
She's gonna try to get a special use permit, gonna try to do it again in that same spot?
Again, I'd have, I'd have to look at the application and see what it, I haven't went over anything other than.
Did you see it? What is it?
I didn't look at the application. I know she said.
Only thing I looked at was the check and I said, hey, if you're gonna apply for this, it's 500, not 400.
Okay, so what is she applying for? If it's 500, what's that for?
It's a Class B.
I don't know what class it is.
Class, Class B restaurant slash lodging license.
So, she's gonna sell fifty percent food or fifty-one percent food?
Be my assumption, yeah.
And how do we track that, Rob?
Well, they're subject to an audit, sorry. Yeah. Yeah, no, that's exactly right.
I didn't think there was a kitchen in there.
I said that too, and I guess there's a.
There's a small kitchen in there. She does have a food handler's license, so.
If, if you serve something, I guess that's considered.
I mean, it doesn't, tell me if I'm wrong here, I don't know if it matters what they serve as long as they reach that.
Right, quota.
That limit of, of enough revenue. Because with, the difference with a Class B and a Class A, you can't get a Class, and I say Class B because I have these memorized, difference between a restaurant license and a tavern license. Tavern license, you sell as much alcohol as you want. With a restaurant license, you have to, the primary purpose of the business has to be a restaurant, not a tavern. And to prove that is, would be an audit showing that most of your revenue, majority of your revenue comes from food, food sales.
But I think we still need to go back to the point, it is not zoned to sell liquor out of without a special use permit. Now, that's my interpretation. You're looking at a restaurant license slash tavern bar, correct?
The B1 list that we covered before, and again, I'm coming back from vacation, so I'm still on vacation, so.
The B1 allows a restaurant.
Under, as long as it's under thirty-five hundred square feet.
But it does the same thing about allowing a restaurant with a liquor license.
It doesn't mention that at all.
So, this is something I think needs to be brought in front of the whole council, not just one individual's, you, interpretation of what that means.
Rob, do you have any say on that?
I, I want to go back to what the mayor said. He hasn't read it yet. So, why don't we wait and see what it says and if you need to, if we need to address it. I mean, if, if it's not zoned to sell liquor, if it's not zoned to sell liquor, let's wait and see what it is.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna say this publicly, I find this very troubling that we just voted six oh, or oh six, actually, to not have liquor at that location, whether it's a bar or a restaurant. We had overwhelming public comments not supporting liquor at that location. And I think we've got to be very careful about being transparent here. I'm not gonna be a part of some shady deal when the public didn't want something and now we're just gonna have another application. I think we have to be pretty careful.
Yeah.
What are your thoughts on that, Rob?
Well, I think, I don't think there's a limit to how many times somebody can apply for something. You could, I guess, make a limit, but if it, if it doesn't.
Can you limit liquor licenses?
Yeah.
Just like we do gaming. So, perhaps we should look for that. So, we don't, because I think what troubles me is we don't have a say because the mayor is the liquor commissioner for the village, and I've been on a board where the mayor issued a liquor license and I was not aware as a board member, and I'm not doing that again.
Just as a reminder, and I'm not picking on you when I say this, but I've recommended that since I've taken office.
Yeah.
We cap.
And I think that would be great.
We cap them the same way that we did the gaming licenses.
Yeah.
That said, if this application, and again, I haven't read it, she turned it in last night. I looked at the price last night and that's it. And I looked a little bit more of the zoning part today, being the special use stuff. And I'm gonna use the magic words of arbitrary and capricious. If there's no reason for me to not issue it, I, I may have to issue it because the license is available. If it's zoned, if it's zoned, if the zoning is correct, then that is what it is. It would, again, it would be subject to audits though, because it's not a Class A license, it's a Class B license.
Well, I don't think there's any argument in all. It is zoned to be a restaurant.
Correct. And, and you bring up a valid point, and that's, that's what I mean when I say.
Yeah, there's nothing in there that says restaurant slash bar slash tavern, whatever, so.
No, it, that wasn't addressed in there at all, so.
I think we should put on the agenda for one of our committee, well, the committee meetings is next month to start discussing capping liquor licenses. I don't want to have to come into every meeting wondering if there's a liquor license hanging out there that I don't know about. I don't know how the rest of you feel about it, but I'm not gonna do this every month.
City has caps on there, don't they?
Yes.
Sure they do.
And Harry has said that before. So, I think we need to move forward and do that.
And again, and I, I'm getting a little off track here because we need to get the payables, but you can do, and do each type of license as well. I mean, it's up to you guys on how many of each type you want, the same way we did with the gaming, so.
Okay. So, what do we decide then on the, because back to your payables?
Payables.
What were we doing with that 400?
My advice would be we just leave it there because she did apply. Whether or not she gets it or not, that's another issue. And if she doesn't get this one, I'd say refund it, but.
Did she give you another $100?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe positive, but I don't hold on to anyone.
That's fine, yeah. I think the paper trail's there.
That's a whole separate application.
Right. So, I think it's there and it's.
It will also be in the minutes.
There won't be any problems there.
Absolutely. It'll also be in the minutes tonight.
Pardon me?
It will also be in the minutes tonight.
Yeah, yeah. You writing any of this down?
A motion to approve the payables with the eight hun, eight hundred-ish, whatever that amount is for the gravel that's in action item four, that being subject to action item four being approved, and knowing that for the, that escrow will be closed out.
So moved. Yeah.
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Okay. Veterans Day parade. It is November ninth at 11:00 AM, not 10:00 AM. So, Chief, where's it start and where's it end? Go ahead.
It starts at, uh, South Union Dewey Drive, it's down at Community Park.
Short and sweet. Leaf pickup this month, we are doing it every month, or every Tuesday this month?
Can we back up there a minute, Harry?
Yes, sir.
Do, do we, as a group, we participate in this parade or not?
We have and we have.
Have it in the past? We just sanction it?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Um, I mean, can if we want. We have a banner that we bought for a float that we used once.
I just wonder if it's customary that the village is represented or not.
Could be. I would like it to be, but.
There will be a fire truck in there. You can ride on the fire truck.
You can ride on the fire truck, Todd. And die.
Chief, anything, or, I'm sorry, John, anything you want to say about the leaf pickup?
No, we, this, this week was really light, not that many leaves are falling, but they've been picked up, split open and fresh, so.
Sounds good. They're starting to fall now, so.
Right.
Uh, the tax levy draft, Tiffany, I'm gonna go ahead and let you explain that so I don't muddle it up.
Sure. Um, the tax levy draft, they can vote on next month. Um, we can talk about it as a committee if you want to, but you've got the preliminary now. With that being said, preliminary, I don't expect it to change unless one of you, um, people voting on it and one's at the same. Um, it applies with truth and declaration, um, so we don't need a public hearing. And, um, while still asking for the almost five percent increase, um, that we need, that is the rule that we get all that money, we're asking the town for it, say, of course, that the tax rates and give us that whatever they, moving up this area, so, um, that's the one I want.
Okay.
When does this have to be?
I'm sorry.
Published? When?
It doesn't, it gets published, I believe, do you have some notes on that one? I think, I think you do. And then, we publish it and we just, we post it here on the board for ten days. And then it goes up to the courthouse, so, but we don't do that until after you pass it.
Okay, that's. I know it's another year, but I, Mr. Jordan asked me, I'm.
It was a year ago, so.
Yeah.
The joint TIF review, we've moved that date around a few times, so it's going to be November 21st at 2:00 PM. And it'll be right here. Anybody's welcome to come.
21st?
21st. Building permits?
You say it, Todd? 2:00 PM.
That's on a Thursday, it looks like.
Building permits, we had eighteen permits. Total estimated cost, $126,850. And total permit fees, $589.40. Uh, committee meeting? 26th, or, I know that's right before Thanksgiving, so.
Yeah, maybe not that week.
Yeah, I'm, it's whatever you guess.
Just because I bet people are traveling.
19th?
19th is on a Tuesday. I don't like that much as in the other week.
19th?
19th.
6:30? I'm asking.
Yeah.
Sounds alright.
Alright, November 19th at 6:30. And then, we have two public hearings. We talked about scheduling, one for water rates, which still the public all knows in the media. We may also discuss water rate increase, not sewer increase, but the main, I think the main issue we want to get hashed out is catching up on the bills from, we're billing out two months behind and we want to get that down to just one month, unless I'm saying this right. So, that will mean a temporary increase in the water bills to catch that up. And we want all the public to be aware of what's going on and why that increase would be there temporarily. Any ideas when you'd like to do that? Doesn't have to be this month. If you don't want to, it could be next month.
I think it ought to be after the 25th for the, the date. By November 25th, I think it, it ought to be after that.
What's November 25th?
The.
Thing with the county.
Nineteen.
Oh, the 19th.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're alright, you're alright. You had the, yeah, I, I agree with you. I don't have any problem with, I mean, my thought is, I know we kind of jumped around a little bit, talked about even having to spread them out, one one month and one the next, so, it's just a matter of how soon we want to do the sting. And if we're talking about not doing it until spring, because, I say spring, after the first of the year, so we're not doing it during Christmas. We do have time, so.
Well, uh, so you're saying, of course, schedule a meeting, let the public know?
Just basically it's be an informational thing, let the public know and hear their concerns.
Or should you just have that for our fifth, December fifth, we put it in with that, so that, I mean, no?
We could do, if we, we could do that, but we could do it at like 6:30? Do it at 6:30 on the 5th?
And we knock it up, you know what I mean?
Right before.
That's, I am, I'm all.
Because I feel like we should talk about this some more, our committee meeting this month.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
That's not a bad idea.
You know, and then that way, we're not scheduled another meeting and there's.
Because we just kind of talked about it here and there. I think we need to get a plan.
John and I are pretty prepared to give you those, um, letter and charter that we've worked out, so, honestly, it'll, it's gonna come down to you just choosing the one thing you want to start it.
Signs, you know?
Uh, there'll be signs, yeah.
And then the.
We'll draw a picture, though, it's, so.
Mine, too.
And the other public hearing would be, like we discussed with the recreational marijuana sales, with the public's input of having a dispensary or not having a dispensary, allowing a dispensary, to, to get a permit or not, so.
I'm still getting more information on that.
I, I agree, but I didn't know if we want to go ahead and schedule a meeting to have the public's input, or.
I don't see why not. I mean, they.
I think it'd be a good idea.
And nothing's going to be determined that night.
No, 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 that would be.
Let them air it out.
Us explain what it is and then listening to the public's input. And it might take half an hour, might take five minutes, might take an hour, I don't know, but.
Are we gonna have that guy come back?
My, my, my thought is, I wouldn't want any company there representing, not, I mean, that company, I mean, any company. I think this would be purely.
We got what you meant.
Purely statutory as far as.
There was a drift there, I got it.
Purely as far as what we can and can't do.
Okay, yes.
And letting the public know that. Going from there.
If we're gonna do a.
Need to do it before January one.
Why don't we do those two together, the water and that? So, that way, if the public wants to talk about the water or the tax on that, then you do that at a meeting.
What about the 12th? That's the week after our meeting. We just have one at, at 6:30 that night and do both of them, one from 6:30 to 7:00, or just, and then one immediately following.
That's on a Tuesday, or, no.
The 12th is on the Thursday.
Thursday.
I'm just throwing out a date, doesn't have to be then.
No matter, maybe.
Okay, how about we do December 12th and we'll do both of them, one 6:30 and one immediately following? Is everybody okay with that?
We said November 12th?
December.
December. December twelfth, okay, the Thursday, December twelfth for both of them?
Six thirty. And we'll put both of those together, right?
We'll have one at six thirty and then the other one immediately following, so there'll be separate discussions, but one takes five minutes, the next one is at six thirty-five, then.
Maybe just, just, um, maybe also scheduling another one in January, because that's so close to Christmas and I don't know how many people are gonna get too fired up.
I, I figured we'd have to schedule another one, yeah, so.
I don't know.
Well, we can schedule it now or we can schedule it at our December fifth meeting?
Or see how many people show up.
Or see how many people show up at the twelfth and go from there.
You wanna do with it?
No.
Turn it over.
Maybe it says they oughta have munchies after the marijuana.
How do you know that?
Nope, no, uh, that's the pass under Jake's.
Well, it doesn't have January on it, that's what he was saying.
Oh, he was wanting January.
Yeah.
Oh, well, keep it anyway, I never looked at it.
You have this sitting there? You have this on the.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll wait to schedule one in January, but I'm sure we'll have one in January, too.
Okay, oh, you mean, yeah, yeah.
There's your January.
Alright, committee reports.
Thank you.
Personnel, I don't think we had anything other than some closed session stuff, so, uh, well, and hiring and resignation is gonna be on the action items, so. Uh, planning and public facilities?
Water plant's operational.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. You wanna touch on that just real quick, John? I know we're.
We've been having going, uh, week to day, um, everything's going good, but I'm continuing a few things, um, working a few bugs out, but other than that, it's, um, yeah, things are all good.
Alright, finance?
We talked about the two TIF deals, which were, they'll be under the action items and, uh, one of them being McKean, small eight, nine hundred dollar increase on that, and, uh, Mr. Weevil's, uh, TIF application for restaurants, and we talked about moving the tourism fund back to FNB Bank, which there wasn't any bad discussion on it, everybody was in agreement on that, and I can't remember anything else.
I think that was it.
So, okay.
Mr. Weewell, can I ask you, while we were talking about liquor license caps maybe, I know you were talking about a fine dining kind of steak restaurant, so that would need a liquor license. Was your pizza place gonna serve alcohol?
No.
Okay, so there would be one of your three.
Yeah, and I think that B two zoning is already called for.
Okay.
That was going, you wanted to carry out pizza more than a eat-in pizza place, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just curious, cause if we set caps, I wanna keep in mind your.
I was gonna mention that, too, we can, and we can always set the cap of whatever the current number is, if you, I mean, you can do it however you want, because we don't know what the timeline exactly is, but with the understanding that that's some kind of facility opens, you're gonna give them a liquor license. Parks and, parks and tourism?
Um, I met with, uh, Gaila Alquist a little while ago. She came in and talked to us about Dewey Park, and, um, she's been communicating with people at South School, teachers, um, about what they would like to see in the park, because, um, I'm never around here during the day, but apparently they use our park quite a bit. So she had some really cool ideas, um, about that, and, um, as we were talking, we were kinda thinking of ways to make an educational park also a destination park, um, that would have a, the destination attraction to satisfy the tourism requirements, um. And she is going to be meeting with, uh, South's, I don't remember now, PTO or PTA, whatever they have.
PTO, yeah.
PTO, okay, uh, she's gonna be meeting with their PTO, uh, I think later this month, and I, I don't remember off the top of my head, I wanna say it's the nineteenth, that number's sticking out to me, but it's this month, um, to talk to them about involvement, um, to try to make it a community effort, um, to, to make something that suits not just what we like, but what the teachers will like and what parents will like for their kids, and, um, so anyway, uh, she's doing a ton of legwork on that, which is awesome, um, and I'm waiting just to hear what she gets from, from the PTO.
Sounds good.
Is this something we can put on our, uh, website also?
Uh, eventually, yeah.
You know what I mean, for the community to put in their two cents, you know what I mean, you might get good feedback, and then if.
Yeah.
It'd be solid.
Yeah.
Just to talk.
And public protection.
Uh, we got two things here, there's gonna be action items, that'll be the extrication equipment and the resignation and the new hire. For the police.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Tom, I read that, was you done, I didn't interrupt you? Was you done, I didn't interrupt you?
I'm finished, no.
Going back to parks, I was kinda thinking there, as you were talking, right, the, um, the park is down the, um, mulch, just so you guys know, we finished up, it's in the payables there, so.
It's in there.
It's all done.
And we got power washed, dude, didn't we?
Power washed, yeah.
Yep, it was in there, too, wasn't it?
Yep, yeah, so everything's good, um, there is a, about a quart of a load of mulch left from that semi-load, so that'll be, you can have that in spring, we're gonna freshen up if we need to, and it'll be good.
Sounds good, cool.
Now, remember this on the front, there's a rubber mulch just was around the fence and, uh, all this other stuff, and, uh.
Sounds good.
You think that's gonna take care of all those weeds?
Well, they put down a real heavy-duty.
Oh, good.
Commercial barrier.
Good.
So, I mean, you're not gonna stop them, you're gonna have some, so it'll, it'll be very easy to control.
Good.
Chief, or chief, you got anything to add for the?
Our report that I gave you, I'll answer any questions, and then there, uh, we, uh, obviously, we kinda called it in a little bit, uh, there's a copy of Officer Griffin's resignation letter, he's already started with Morgan County, uh, sad to see him, Phil, and, uh, off to, uh, an action item coming up, the acceptance for that. You'll notice that, uh, Luther has gone through the estate certification, it's, uh, certainly been turned up all of it this year, uh, not that we have fears of passing, but it's a, it's a new thing, uh, and it's true, it's, uh, graduated from that with a kind of a disqualification, and just prior to a certification, this is a stop out on I seventy-two, the sixty-four miles, uh, motorhome, you see that picture in the middle, and, uh, you do that in just to, to kinda give you an idea of that. We talked about that in the last committee meeting, and in fact, it will be used for, uh, forfeiture of those funds, so, no question.
Thank you.
Uh, just, um, our call happens to the month of October, we had thirty-seven calls, which sets us at four hundred and forty-two calls, uh, since January first so far, um. Our five new offices that we discussed, uh, a few committee meetings ago, came in last week, we did them in service on Monday after the trend a little bit on. Um, and so we look forward to, hopefully with your guys' approval, to, um, upgrade our extrication tools and, uh, the fire department through our community, but, uh, first, uh, two, no max hoods for all firefighters. And the last thing, uh, the community benefits, I mean, the cook block fundraiser, it's gonna be December fourteenth, uh, seven AM at the firehouse. Anybody wishing to donate some cookies would be greatly appreciated, and if anybody does, they can be dropped off at the firehouse on Friday, thir- thirteenth during the day, about five thirty.
These store-bought cookies or homemade cookies or what? Is there a difference? I mean, you know.
Most people bank them, I mean, there's some that, you know, they'll order something like, they, they're county market or something like that.
I, I didn't know, I don't think you take homemade cookies to school, man.
No, they have to be store-bought from schools now.
Jackson and I will sample one for you. You're there, aren't you?
Not until Jim. Very again.
Oh, a lot of founding chickens are by the head.
Um, and Rich, I didn't get a chance to answer you, but you had emailed about the extrication equipment, the final price, and I just wanted to thank you for that, cause you had told us a ballpark, but I do appreciate the final amounts, and I didn't get a chance to answer, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, move into our action items. Our insurance renewal, IML RMA insurance renewal, a motion to approve our renewal.
I'll make the motion.
I'll let you guys arm wrestle it.
Todd and Tom.
Alright, roll call, uh, second, only be a second, and I'm sure, and then, why did I say second? Yeah, roll call, please.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Yes, yes, ma'am, sorry, it's gonna be, sir, I apologize. Okay, a motion to approve the TIF agreement between the villages of South Jacksonville and LW Developers for the seventy-five percent tax reimbursement of eligible costs for the three-phase restaurant plan.
So moved.
Second?
Second?
Roll call, please.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples? Yes. Jason Hill?
Yes.
Should've asked this right before I did that, but, uh, first, congratulations, but, um, I'm guessing it's one of the attorneys that emailed me earlier today and asked to do this, I guess they hadn't seen yet, but one of the other ones had, I thought, so.
They're, they'll, they'll have to warn you, and I'll be, so don't worry.
Okay, if there's any issues, I'm sure we can, we can get it amended. Alright, motion to relocate the tourism fund, First National Bank.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Yeah, a motion to approve the TIF agreement between the villages of South Jacksonville and Glen McKean, this is for the amendment for, and I'm looking for the amount on here, is it in?
I think it's the, on, with the amendment.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, that was the.
She has said we repay them.
Oh, okay, so for, about approximately eight hundred and nine dollars for the purchase of gravel. Motion to approve that TIF agreement?
So moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick, Dick Samples?
Yes.
A motion to approve the, uh, purchase of the fire department extradition tools, a total of thirty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and nine cents from Sentinel Emergency Solutions.
I'll make the motion.
Second? Roll call, please.
Tom and then Todd?
Sure.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
And, uh, my apologies to Mr. David Bob, we never actually officially hired him, so, uh, a motion to hire Da- David Bob for the, uh, codes department for, and I would mess this up, which one do we, do we call that position?
Code compliance.
Code compliance at fifteen dollars an hour, retroactive to nine twenty-three.
I'll make the motion.
Second, please.
Second? Little discussion here.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
This is one of the few guys that I've been associated with, that, this guy reads this book.
Yes, he does.
You know, so I think we've done really good.
Yeah.
You've done really good.
Cause he's an engineer.
So, but he does read this book, he, he asked a lot of questions, um, he's very eager to help, a little too eager maybe at times, but he, he does make the motion, and, you know, it's, it's been good so far.
He's done well.
Right. Roll call, two first names.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, motion to accept the resignation of Officer Tyler Griffin, who is moving to Morgan County, correct? So, great asset, but unfortunately, I understand he's moving on to a larger department, so, motion to approve that resignation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Paul Stewart?
Yes, but I'd rather not.
Jason Hill?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
An approval of the hire of a part-time police officer, Mr. Matt Watson, at fifteen dollars and eighty-nine cents an hour.
At what?
Fifteen dollars and eighty-nine cents.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second?
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yes.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Jason Hill?
Alright, we'd like to have a short closed session for, uh, personnel under five ILCS one-twenty slash two C one. Little motion to close, open business.
So moved.
Yeah. Second.
Who's the second?
Roger.
So you can do a roll call for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, roll call, please.
There we go, still one address. Old, new business. Old, new business.
Greg Nelson?
Yes.
Dick's now?
Yes.
Dick's samples?
Depending on how long it takes, right?
Thank you. Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Paul Stewart?
She's writing it all down. And you've got, you've got old business or new business?
Tom Jordan?
Yes.
Dick Samples?
Yes.
Todd Ward?
Yeah, those all pertaining to what we just.
Paul Stewart?
Yes.
Oh, we covered all that.
Awesome. Old business.
I have two items. Uh, Mr. John Green went to Bob Kev Springfield to purchase some parts or something for one of our machines and found out that we don't have a credit card over there.
Mm-hmm, store, store account, store account.
Store account, and so he applied for it, and we need, I'd like to make the motion that we approve a credit card for the village of South Jacksonville with Bob Kev Springfield and the amount of, of a limit of fifteen hundred bucks.
We, it's not on the agenda, so we can't do that.
We can't do that, but we can, we can.
Get the consensus.
Get consensus, let, let us start filling out what we need to fill out.
Okay, then I can go ahead and apply.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Does anybody have any problem with Tiffany starting?
I'm good with it.
No.
It's store credit.
It's store credit.
It's a store credit.
Yeah, but it's, and it's an old account, but it's technically a new account, so since, since I have to open a new account.
We have had credit with them in the past.
Right.
Yeah.
It's just been a long time since we've used it.
Been dormant too long.
Yeah, that's probably.
And the other issue is, as Ms. Tiffany brought up, uh, the fire department gets their annual pay the first Tuesday of the month. And I'm talking about annual pay, they like to be paid one time.
First Monday.
Uh, first, first Monday, I'm sorry, I said Tuesday, the first Monday of the month, and they would like to be paid, which would be what, would that be December?
The second. They'd like to be paid on the second, but our payables aren't.
But we won't have the payables to us until the fourth, or fifth.
Fifth. So you can put an action item on your committee night, like a one action item to, to direct her, we just can't vote on it tonight.
Okay.
Cause it's not on the agenda.
And why do they wanna be paid?
Cause they, and customarily, they always get paid the first Monday.
That's, that's their meeting.
That's their meeting.
Last year, last year or the year before, I think what we did was just got a consensus, as long as everybody was okay that we released the checks, and they were paid on.
We do that.
I, I remember getting a phone call about that.